All right, so it is Monday, September 23. It is shortly after 6:30. We are back in open session. We had a brief executive session that began at 6:00 PM. We've got Chief Silva here first to speak with us. So Chief, we'll turn it over to you.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for indulging me for a few minutes, but I just want to bring the board up to speed on a few things that are going on across the parking lot at the firehouse. And it's all very good news. So in November, it'll be my one-year anniversary here as the Fire Chief of the town of Plimpton. And there are several things we were tasked with to change the culture, if you will, of the fire station. And I'm happy to report, we're making incredibly good progress over there. Our retention is up. We actually get people applying. Our training programs have gone over extremely well, and they continue forward. One of the things that's gone well for us is application and awardments of several grants. And I just want to bring it to speed in round figures of a few that we have notified that the money is on the way or we've actually received. And it started off last spring with the help of one of the town people here, Elise. We received about approximately $16,000 grant from Firehouse Subs for a piece of medical equipment that was needed in the secondhand. It was wonderful. I've also been notified recently, we've been awarded up to $25,000 to the Gary Sinise Foundation, and that will allow us to purchase some specialized protective gear for our firefighters and paramedics. I was also notified this week that we're receiving upwards of close to $17,000 from FEMA. And that is for a gear washer and gear dryer. Currently, if any of our protective clothing gets dirty from a fire or whatnot, we have to rely on the graces of the neighboring community to allow us to use their washers and such. Through the help of Elizabeth Dennehy, we have a piece of a green grant that will help replace the appliances as we renovate the station. I was notified today that almost $4,000 is coming to us in October from a company called FM Global. And that is so we can update engine two and the tanker with tablets and computer screens for our pre-planning. We're modeling that program after how Carver does theirs. Captain Schuester today informed me that he received almost $4,000 from DFS, Department of Fire Services, for education of children and seniors on fire prevention. And let's see, the regional communication center is through a grant giving us two mobile data terminals with installation. That's about $5,000. Expecting another $2,700 from MEMA, hopefully, through an EMPG grant to help update some of the needs we have here in the town hall with our emergency operating center. And hopefully, we will also receive what's known as a VFA grant from the forestry service to augment some of our forest fire equipment. So if, including those there in round figures we've brought in to date, we'll have brought in by the first year about $83,000 in additional grant money for the department, which is great. It really is.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. If you add into a few little bit of horse trading here or there and some fundraisers, we're probably closer to 92 grand. And that's extremely helpful, because we did run into a couple of speed bumps over the past year or so. Just to bring it to speed quickly, we found that, it seemed that there was a little bit of a lack in record-keeping, perhaps? I wasn't really sure, until we got further into it. And we found that some things that should have been done, perhaps weren't, and we took steps to correct some of this. One in particular is our code enforcement department. We didn't really have one. So Captain Schuester, at the free training through the State Department of Fire Services, has now obtained his certification as a fire prevention officer. It's a recognized certification, nationally recognized, and he has been tasked in doing very well with setting up occupancy files, tracking everything we need from just annual inspections, new construction, plan reviews, things like that. So we're definitely on track with that. And what's nice about that is the software already existed. We already had it, it just hadn't been used. And so there was no expense to the town on that. So that's been very, very, very helpful, very good. The other thing we found, though, we had very little record-keeping on our maintenance of vehicles. And that turned into a bit problematic. We found that some of our vehicles, despite being 10 years old, had really never been, shall we say, formally assessed or repaired. Now, in today's world, especially after some tragedies in the past few years, it's imperative that, especially our fire apparatus, when they are sent out for certifications, evaluations, and of course, repair, that the person doing the repair is a certified emergency vehicle technician. Those are ratings that are difficult to get, but they do exist, and we have relationships with mechanics that have those relationships. Now, that's the good news. The bad news is, we found that many things, although they looked nice from the outside, were not so well-maintained on the inside, to the point where we have spent to date almost $15,000 in repairs on vehicles, from pumps to transmissions to brakes to a little bit of everything. It's pretty much across the board with every piece of equipment that we have. Another good news, though, on the go-forward, with a now-formalized maintenance program, and to make that program work, we brought onboard Captain Paul Lamarru, who's currently also a captain with the Bridgewater Fire Department, who is a past officer of the Massachusetts Fire Apparatus Mechanics Association. Let's just say he knows trucks. And he has set up the maintenance program for us. And I am happy to say that, with the exception of a brush breaker, which I'm not too concerned about right now with the end of brush season, everything else is 100% up to par, from brakes to fluids to regular maintenance to any other repair that's needed. So that being said, going on to next year, of course, there'll be expenses for normal routine maintenance, but unanticipated major failures should be a thing of the past. It's never 100%, but 90%, we'll put it that way. So that's good. Now the giant elephant in the room, or perhaps the giant white trailer in the parking lot, however we wanted to call that. So me being an impatient person, I suppose in many ways, this is driving me crazy, because I had hoped to have this situation fully resolved by now, and it's partially resolved. I would have loved to have told you that the trailer is leaving next week, but it does not. But I assure you, it is leaving in as quickly as I can make it happen. The delays have been, well, almost because things are too good, I suppose. Getting the trades in is sometimes a bit of a challenge. We have been receiving quotes now on the electrical system, which is in a little greater disrepair than we had anticipated. We've taken some steps. The panel boards have been replaced, but to bring this station into a safe state of being, it's costing perhaps a little more than anticipated, but we are really shopping this one very hard. There are some issues with plumbing, but not nearly as grave as the electrical system. So one of our new members, Keith Ponce, who just became a father of twins last week, has been tasked with my, I'm going to call him the clerk of the works. Keith is an engineer, a master maritime graduate. He's a facilities manager at the power plant on the canal. He's well-buried in construction and facilities. And he has taken upon himself, with my blessing, to be the lead on our rehabilitation project. And so I would expect that nails start pounding probably within the next couple of weeks. I need that trailer out before the snow flies. And we will be examining the right way to perhaps surplus that out and recoup any funding at the board's discretion, as it may come in. And there's an open house coming up in October, more to follow on that. I believe it's October 26, I believe, 10 to 2, which of course, the entire town is invited. Please check our Facebook page on that, which again, is something else that we have put into play. Social media is, it is here. It is here to stay, whether you like it or not. It's irrelevant, but it's an incredibly good communication tool. The citizens and visitors to Plimpton are our customers, and it's our responsibility to let them know what we are doing with their money. And that's my quick report.
It's a great report.
Any questions?
Lots of good news. Lots of good things happening.
We're getting them. We really are. It's exciting. It really is.
Any questions for the chief?
Yeah. Do you see, we had a problem with attracting people back always. That seems to be solved?
So it's interesting, yeah. It's never 100% solved. It never will. It's the nature of the business. But in the past year, some people who had left for positions in other fire departments have actually come back as per diems and part-timers, with the blessing of, for instance, the Bridgewater Fire Department, the Yarmouth Fire Department, there are several others that hull, that graciously allowing some of their members to work most part-time. So some of our more seasoned veterans, if you will, have come back. We can always use more. We have two, maybe three people that are relatively new, and I say that, less than a year, that will be, we've just had them apply for the new Call and Volunteer Fire Academy, which will be taking place in Bridgewater over the winter. It's a new program, put on by Department of Fire Services, the Mass Fire Academy, at a new Bridgewater campus. So we are retaining more, and we're starting to get more people in. And to be perfectly honest, we haven't done a hard recruitment drive at this time. Like I said, we can always use more people, but the people that are coming in are coming in because they want to be there, and that's very good.
Great news.
So that's very good. We're happy about that.
It's a turnaround.
Well, that's, I'm sure, due to the chief's efforts and putting together a strong team.
Sorry, I'm deaf as a haddock lately.
It's something that we worried about before you came on.
Was the recruitment and retention?
Yes.
Well, like I said, it's always a challenge. We're actually, the Plymouth County Fire Chiefs, we're kind of getting together and trying to figure out what to do on the go-forward, not just for a town like Plimpton, but in many even your larger communities where there's civil service, there just aren't any applicants out there. There is a, if not a crisis, close to it, of shortage of paramedics. As I understand it, the current civil service list is just about out of paramedic firefighters. They just don't exist. And I believe they've exhausted the veteran side as well. So this is not just Plimpton. It's a, and the police have a similar issue. I'm also the liaison between the Plymouth County Fire Chiefs and the Plymouth County Police Chiefs, and it's the same conversation, it's just a different uniform. So I don't know, maybe it's a cultural thing. I don't know, but we're doing the best we can with it.
I wonder if there's anything we could do to really entice more residents?
Well, a couple of things we're doing to try to get more people interested in the fire department, at least to just see what is it you people do? Again, Captain Schuester taking lead on the Facebook. It's been great. Firefighter Paramedic Kim DeWolf is sort of my morale officer, is the best way I can describe her, and she's working diligently on like open houses and our Christmas things and just getting the word out of what we do. And then the attitude about people out on the street on calls. I mean, we don't see people on their best day, but if we can make their worst day a little bit better, you know, that does go a long way. Other things coming up in the future, certainly by the first of the year, we're going to open up to community CPR, where we will have one day a month or one evening a month where it's just open. Come on in if you want to be certified in CPR. It's all about getting out into the community and letting the community know that, you know, there is a spot for everybody. It doesn't necessarily, if you don't want to be a structural firefighter or an EMT, or if you do, that's fine, but there's always a place. We are resurrecting our CERT team that's coming down the pike again by the first year, where there's an opportunity, and this has been well-received by some of our folks that left out and had to retire, but they still want to do something for the town and public safety, and we will have a spot for them. We will. And that's, there's a place for everybody to do something, and to turn somebody away because they don't maybe fit the mold or whatever is wrong. And so everyone is welcome.
Sounds great.
It does sound great, yeah, absolutely.
Really refreshing. We've had some tricky times, and you've done a wonderful job riding the ship.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And if you have nothing else, I just, like I said, in the air of transparency, I just want to let you know what we are on the finances, and this is the same report I gave to FinCom. The pie is only so big, and there should never be a lot of surprises. There are unanticipated needs that will always happen, but as long as we all know about and work together, I see a good go-forward.
Great. Well, thank you, chief. Thank you so much for coming in.
Have a wonderful evening.
You, too. Okay, Bree, do we have warrants?
Yes, we do. We just have one.
Okay. All right, so the warrants paid, looks like coast. What's coast, Bree?
Maintenance, the coast maintenance. It's all the supplies for the building.
Okay, great. Couple of maintenance bills, four supplies, one for the townhouse, one for the police. It's like altogether, that was about $179. US Bank, $155. Verizon, $41113. Crystal Rock, $778. And Comcast Business, $13658. So for a total of $889.49 out of the BOSS budget line? All right, so that's warrants. Do we have appointments we need to make today?
Yes, we do. We have conservation, cultural council, and there's a planning board.
Okay, so the conservation is the agent, correct?
Yes, Brian. And then two for the cultural, and then the one.
Okay. All right, so any questions, comments? It's Brian Vassa, and this is, didn't, we posted this position for the conservation agent, and they interviewed candidates, and this is the pick, Mr. Brian Vassa.
So this is the recommendation of the conservation commission?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we appoint Brian Vassa as the conservation agent until 6:30 2020.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think, at least in my memory, first time we've had a conservation agent.
It is.
And boy, that's a committee that is in such need of help, so this is wonderful.
Yeah, we're definitely heading in the right direction. Okay, on planning board, Jay Cohen. Very nice. New to planning board, so thank you, Jay, for agreeing to serve on this important committee until 6:30 2020.
Aye.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's another good one.
Yeah, and two more excellent ones. We've got Gail Knight, two cultural council until 6:30 2020, and Jennifer McDonald on cultural council until 6:30 2020. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for agreeing to come and serve on these important boards and committees.
Yes, and Jen believes she has another one to go onto that.
Okay.
Then I can, once they get sworn in, I can get them to, they'll be able to sign the things, the warrants and things.
So are they, how many are on the cultural council?
We have two.
There's two, so these are the two.
So that is the cultural council.
Right now, it's two. It was two before, at least now we have two.
It's a great start.
It's a good start.
Just having a functional council would be wonderful.
Okay. Do you have the agent one, too? The conservation agent? Okay, so Open Cape Fiber, do we have a report on that?
I think Liz is working with that.
Is she coming in? Liz is with FinCom still.
Okay.
And she said, are you okay with that?
All right, so why don't we hold that? And we've got a one-day liquor license request, Colchester Farm Harvest Event.
Yes. Everything is up to date, and they were tip-certified. John has asked paid. And they were for profit, so it's a $75 fee.
Okay.
And I need two signatures for that.
Colchester Farm is for?
Yes, they're going to do a harvest fair.
You mean they're for profit, they're not an honor?
Well, the gentleman that's doing it, some of it's for, so there's two different ones.
Okay.
All right, so it's just one license, though, right?
One, it's a one day.
It's a one day.
One day event.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we sign a one-day liquor license for, it'd be Colchester Farm, or is it?
Colchester Farm Harvest.
It's Harvest, and it's Harper's Brewery? It's in the, on the outside of that. Harper's, it's on his check?
Okay. So that's who the name will be on the license? Harper Lane Brewery? Okay, all right, so I make a motion that we authorize Harper Lane Brewery with a one-day liquor license, and it's just for beer and wine, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And today is the 23th, 19. Looks like we all signed this one.
Yes.
Okay, there's that. All right, so that's the one-day liquor license. We got our update from Chief Silva already. All right, write of first refusal, Hardju Brothers.
I don't know if Liz has something new. We were waiting for documentation that we felt like would start the 120-day clock. Have you, did you receive anything, no?
I have not received, they've only picked up one certified.
So I guess we just can confirm with Liz that she hasn't received anything.
Okay.
If so, we're waiting.
How about the correspondence?
That we can do. This is, I can get myself, this was an update for the clerk's office. When I, I was on vacation in July when we met. It was about the complete count committee search that she was doing.
She was going to put together a committee, yeah.
Okay, so there's one for each of you on that. She sent an, she sent me an email.
Great.
Just wanted to communicate where we stand on the complete, and she has a couple of people that she's interested in.
So I assume that this was under the auspices of the town clerk. What's our role in this?
I think it's just informational. She's just letting us know.
Well, she's asking how the segment planned to move forward.
Yeah, this was hers. I don't think we need to make the appointments, right? This is just a committee she's forming.
I think we need maybe Liz to also clarify with the town clerk.
Okay.
I don't think we have a role, but I just want to make sure.
Okay, so check with Liz if we need to make these appointments, or if the town clerk can just make these under her jurisdiction.
Okay.
Okay, what else do we have?
We have a memo from John Schuester at the fire department. The wires that were down on Lake Street in spring, we had a complaint come into the office about some logs in Everso, and the wires were down. John and I worked together, and John got it taken care of.
Great.
It was a year and a half later, but I asked him. He's happy to report that this, as of Friday, September 13, Verizon has properly fixed both locations. The trees have been cleared, and the lines have been secured to a normal, safe height.
Perfect.
They are not hanging across lake.
So I don't have to do another rant?
No. You don't have to do another rant. Now you can do a rant.
Yeah, for John.
Yeah, for John. Not for Verizon, no.
They had showed closed in their system at Verizon, and John got right to the top, so it was great. And then the Board of Health, Kathy, did a triple E update. Do you want to motivate this?
Sure.
Go ahead, John.
The Department of Public Health held a conference call today at 4:00 PM to update communities. Due to continued warm weather, there will be another round of aerial spraying of high risk and critical risk communities beginning tomorrow night. This is dated September 16, so it's a little old. Residents should assume that their community could be sprayed as soon as tomorrow night. Spraying will take multiple nights. EE is still an issue until a killing frost. This is not to be confused with the first frost, which is the first time the temperature drops below 32 degrees. A killing frost is when the temperature drops below 28 degrees for three consecutive hours. Residents should continue to take all precautions to protect themselves against mosquitoes.
Okay.
And with the warm weather we're having, it seems like it's still an issue.
Right, it's going to continue this week.
So we've all accomplished something. None of us have gotten triple E so far.
Yeah, that's.
So was the Plimpton Halifax Express with the bid on the Plimpton jail cell? Mosquito spray continues.
The date on the bid?
October 4?
October 15. The deadline for CPC applications is October 15?
No, the deadline on the jail.
The jail cell.
I think it's October 3.
Okay. Bids to you?
Yes.
Okay.
By 10:00 AM on October 3.
All right.
Yeah, I'd have to read the whole article.
Which is Wednesday, isn't it?
It's Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday. Okay.
Okay. That was for Plimpton. That was pretty much it for the Tales of Old Plimpton again.
It was passed out to each of us.
The remembrance, that Plimpton Halifax remembrance for the 9/11. That was in there. Sports.
I have a reading.
Okay.
Would you like you to gaze at this picture? This is my family. So this is my brother-in-law, John Shay the barber. This is my grandson, Jared. This is the new barber in the John Shay's barber shop. John's son Darren, my nephew. And this is Corey, who is related to Darren's wife.
Right.
So we have a full house of relatives here.
This is last week's edition, or?
This is the.
Yeah, this was last week, so I believe.
September 20.
Wow, can't believe we missed that.
Very nice.
They're all handsome.
Extremely, extremely, yep.
And they all give good handcuffs.
Yes, they do. I think they're one of the only barber shops that's busy all day long, no matter what time you get there.
A lot of people have left there because they just don't want to wait two or three hours, but this four barbers there now, so.
And four chairs?
Four chairs.
Terrific. When does the new barber start?
Jared, he started.
Jared has started. Okay, terrific. Wow, that's exciting. And there is an article about the Winnetoxet Bridge, closed for repairs, so that has been communicated to residents in the area by Scott and Plimpton Historic Society. Fall Vintage Fair, so that is October 5 and 6.
I understand that they're still looking for a few volunteers. I think pretty well there. You know, got a lot of people. There's always room for more.
So it will be here? It'll be held at the?
Yeah.
No, Old Town House, okay.
Two days.
All right, very nice. And then, what else? A nice article from Barry about what's up. Real pretty pictures from Soul Homestead, their harvest fair. And let's see what else we've got in here. Oh, rats. Captain Dryman. All right, so it looks like we've got some notices in here, too. Don't we, Towne of Plimpton, CBA? Looks like there's going to be a hearing for a special permit filed by Rutha Hola for her property on West Street, 63 West Street.
One way over on the right.
And then the sale of the surplus, which is the jail three-sided structure from the Plimpton Police Station here, which is, let's see, if we've got a description of it. It's the P., Plimpton Police Department cage, and what's the metal? Would it be like iron, red painted iron?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It might be baked on enamel, but it is heavy, heavy, heavy.
All right, so includes a steel internal bench, and that, as Liz said, the bids are due to us by, actually, Thursday, October 10, 10:00 AM. So 10:10 at 10. Not easy to remember. And the bids should be submitted to the town administrator, and our address is on the, in the advertisement. All right, and that's it. All right, so was that it for correspondence, Bree?
Yes. Did you want to ask Liz about this clerk thing, or I could, we can?
Sure. Well, how about first, do you have anything on Open Cape Fiber?
So I just want to make sure that we're going through the proper procurement process, because we are procuring internet service. So I'm going to put something out and do it in accordance with 30B. Just to make sure that we solicit three written responses.
Good idea.
So we'll have more on that probably in the next two to three. So we'll have more on that probably in the next two to three weeks.
Okay. Anything on how'd you write a first refusal?
I've heard nothing, other than the communication from their attorney where he said, you know, "No, we need to get you this information. We're working on it." And there's been nothing since, to my knowledge.
Okay.
So in their hands. We'll wait.
Right. Then we received an update from Tricia Denerman, the town clerk, about three people that had shown interest in serving on the complete count committee.
Right. We explained that to them.
Do we need to do anything with this? It's within her purview, right?
I think so. I think it's her committee for the census.
Okay. So we'll just let her know that, you know, it's her committee, and that she can make the appointments as she feels fit. Okay? Perfect.
So we're not...
No, we won't be making any appointments on that. Right. All right. Anything on the goals to report? Any news on any of these items?
I was going to write up from the last meeting, just update the chart. John and I had a great meeting today with the town accountant about some new financial reporting that we're going to be looking into, so I thought that seemed productive. And everything seems to be moving forward, so that's a good thing.
Very good. Okay. Excellent.
Do we have one thing on volunteer outreach?
Mm-hmm.
So I got the list from the town clerk. I pulled together a report, which I sent to you. You probably haven't seen it, because I think just before I left the house. The interesting thing, and Liz is going to put this out on social media for the town, but we have 133... 130, actually. I've reduced it to three. But 130 elected or appointed positions that don't get paid and are considered volunteer, like I said. Of that, there's 124 that are filled. So we only have six open positions. Three of them are on the cultural council, and we just give two.
Right.
So we've got one of the trustees of the public library, one from the conservation commission. And I guess that's filled tonight, right?
No, that's the agent.
That's the agent. You're right. So we still have one open. We will now have one on the council, cultural council, one on Jason Park. And that's it. We do have two alternate positions open for the zoning board of appeals. But those are a little different in that there's some expertise required to kind of just be somebody coming in. Preferably, we want somebody out of plan in conservation or something like that.
Okay.
But I think that's a testament to the volunteer spirit of the town.
Great. That is great news.
Hopefully, we keep it going.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So that's about volunteerism. I don't think we've got anything really new. Oh, I just had a thought on senior citizen needs. If transportation might be a good place to start to...
Okay.
To look. Because we all have transportation needs.
Right.
And that... And for us, we've had issues with Gatra because we're not big enough on our own, and neither is Halifax.
No.
But Carver has.
I went to the library, and April Fleming, I think, was there. April lives on Main Street.
Okay.
And she said... She had heard that we were not big enough, so she called the Carver Council on Agent. And they said, "No, we're willing to go into Plimpton." So they said they have supplied the information to Joy Marvel.
Okay.
I caught Joy, and she just said, "I have information, but we didn't get a chance to talk about it."
Okay.
But my understanding, and I hope I'm right on this, they'll come to your house, pick you up, and they have set dates. So it might be like a Tuesday and a Thursday they go to. One day might be Stop &amp; Shop, another day Shaw's. And on the other two days, they might... One might be medical runs to different... So one might be to Plymouth, the other one might be, say, North up to South Shore. So it sounds like there's an opportunity there, and I think we've got to press Council.
Absolutely, yeah. Let's do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Have fun.
Okay. All right.
Boy, that's... And that's one that, you know, the crowd I hang around with, that's all my age, would love to see.
Right.
I had tried contacting them once before, and I played phone tag with the director for about three or four weeks, and then never heard from him again.
Okay.
But I'll try again, too.
Well, hopefully, it's something we can put together, because there's definitely a need, and it would be a really nice service and a nice thing for us to share services with.
Yeah. And we still have the application in front of that van, so hopefully sometime by November, I think.
Yeah. True. Okay. So I don't think there's really anything to report on the long-range master plan for the town campus. That group is going to start meeting relatively soon, November, wasn't it?
November 13.
They wanted a break. They wanted a little time off?
Yes.
Well-earned. And then you're going to look at transportation with Carver. And we've got our grant writer on board?
We do. I'm waiting to see if she's reached out to some of the people yet.
Okay.
As of today, she had not contacted the police chief of fire.
The list you gave her? Okay.
Is she going to check in with us, the board of selectmen, or is that through you?
She's supposed to have a report back to me by October 2nd. And then there was potentially talk of her coming to our meeting on October 7th, maybe to give an update. But we need to kind of decide if that's worthwhile or not. I think it would depend on how much of an update, because that costs us a lot of money to...
Right.
She's checking with the other people as to their priorities or their wish list.
And then she's to put together a report of all the wish list items and send it to us so that we can kind of chime in and say, "Yes, this makes sense."
But we might have things on... To add to the wish list.
To add, yes.
Okay.
And we had talked about, rather than her coming all the way down in a meeting to maybe do a teleconference.
We had talked about that, too. It was her... She had said to me, "Oh, maybe I could come there on October 7th." I haven't responded to that yet. I don't know that that's good use of her funds, to drive all the way out here just to sit here for 20 minutes.
Right.
I agree. And I kind of like the idea. If we set up with Skype now, it'll just be an ongoing thing.
Right.
I'm probably going to get Zoom, which is a platform I know well and like. And I think we had talked about it before. There's a slight fee, but I will get it for myself, and we're glad to offer it to the town. So I think that's a... It's a pretty powerful way to not have to drive for three hours.
Hopefully, we can do it right off this.
Oh, that's...
Wouldn't that be nice?
And that's the way to do it.
Yeah, that...
On the Big Street.
Yeah. That sounds perfect. All right. So Liz, do you have any updates? Other updates?
Did you, by any chance, did you make the appointment to the planning board? Is that all done?
Yes.
Okay, good.
We did the conservation agent, planning board, and the two cultural councils.
Perfect. Okay. I had a good meeting with FinCom just now. So we covered a lot of things, and we're going to be coming up...
Were they positive about their new space?
Yes. They enjoyed the new space upstairs, so it was good. We're going to be doing some capital planning stuff, probably looking at that for next time, for the next meeting. And I had a conference call today with Steve Groan from EverSource, from Energy Source, which is our vendor that does all the green communities work, and the woman from Department of Energy Resources, who has replaced Seth Pickering. And so everything's off and running with those projects now.
Well... So appliances. Can we... Will that help with our kitchen here and the new kitchen down the end?
It'll help with the fire department and with the kitchen here.
The one down here?
Well, up there, their refrigerator is actually fairly up to date.
Really new? Oh, okay.
So it'll be more helpful to the fire station to get rid of some of the archaic appliances that they have.
What about the Old Town House? Is there any chance we could fit there, do you?
We could see if it's possible, or the other option may be to take a look at what's being rotated out. And if any of that is more up to date or more energy efficient than what they have there, we could swap something.
Yeah, I think that'd be worthwhile.
It's an allowance for the appliances. They wanted us to start at the fire station, because theirs were the oldest and are using up the most energy.
Sure.
And then we had allotted for the ones in the kitchen here.
Great.
So we can go from there on those. I also need to set up a coordination meeting for Peter Veneto with those same people that I spoke with today, just to make sure that they're on the same page, because quite a few of the projects were for Denit School. One of them was for the boilers. And we made kind of a collective decision on the conference call today that we're going to see if we can put that project off until the spring. We don't want to be messing around with the boilers right before winter.
Right.
Not that I would think that something not good would happen. I mean, it's a great project, but it just doesn't seem smart to tinker around with a big-ticket item when we're going to need it. So we're going to see about that one, if we can put off the incentives and still get the incentives if we put it off until the spring.
All right. Great. All right. So any other business? All right. Dates to remember. Our next meeting will be October 7th, followed by October 21st. The town hall will be closed on 10/14 in observance of Columbus Day.
So on the 21st...
I'm not available the 21st.
You won't be here.
And I won't be available either.
Well, then, let's do... Why don't we not meet unless necessary? Want to see what's going on?
Yeah. I mean, that'll be three meetings.
We've done it before. You could just meet if something came up.
Yeah, why don't we meet?
All right. Let's hold it and see.
Yeah, so we'll hold it, but we may be canceling that meeting if it's not needed.
It's a chance, though, for us to, you know...
Talk about Mark. Yeah, exactly. Assigning all the committees.
I can't wait to come home and see it on TV.
Actually, get you Zoom, and you can participate.
Yeah. Remote participation. What's that statute that we need to enact?
Yeah. No kidding. All right. So minutes. We've got open session from 9:00, 9:00. I don't know if you got a chance to read those.
Is this the one we just got?
Yep, it's the one we just got. It looked good to me. Did you get a chance to read it, Mark?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm okay.
All right. So let's... I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of 9:00, 9:00 as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we are missing 9:16, an executive session for 9:00, 9:00.
The executive session went out.
Yeah, I saw that.
I don't know why I didn't see that.
I remember seeing John Sensen. I didn't print it.
And the 9:16 was our working meeting, which is just basically, you know, very basic notes. We didn't take any votes.
Did I do that, too?
You did that one. But I don't think...
No, I didn't.
You didn't send it out.
I didn't?
No.
I'm sorry. I don't have the 9:00 today either.
I don't have it with me.
Am I making that up?
No, I did do it.
I remembered seeing something.
Yeah, I did do it.
Okay. All right. So why don't we hold the executive session for 9:00, 9:00, and then the 9:16, and we'll vote on those at our next meeting. Okay. So rants and raves. Do you want to go first?
Well, my rave is sort of what I talked about before. The volunteerism in this town is just great. 130 positions and only six after tonight. It sounds like it's probably four. I just think that's unbelievable. People are willing to invest. We do need new blood coming in, so we talked about that, and hopefully we can keep reaching out, because we have people on multiple boards. It'd be nice to put some other new people coming in.
Lightening out, yeah.
But that's my rave.
Okay. All right. My rave is Chief Silva. What a great job he's done changing the culture at the fire department. And it's just a breath of fresh air to hear his report tonight and what they're working on. And, you know, they've uncovered issues, but they've resolved them and come up with a plan going forward. So it's just really... Very comforting to have him in a leadership position, so.
Totally.
And that was going to be my rant, so I'll just expand it a little more. A bunch of good things going on, and there will certainly be some bumps, but we might as well savor all the good things while we're on a roll.
Absolutely. Okay. Being that we've got no other business, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Good night.
Yes.
Good night.